Legal on the, uh, item number one?
Yes, uh, now I was actually trying to pull up Stacy's email. Did everybody get a chance to read Stacy's email?
I did.
You did.
And I know Stacy's not here today, but can anybody tell me what's different in this email than what we have gotten for the last month and a half? I mean, I think we asked, Mr. President, I think we asked as the council, we wanted to know some cities that do this and how they do it. And we didn't get that answer.
That's why we gotta do what we need to do when it come budget time to get the council to help that we need to try to get us to-
Just may I, I think reality, if you hadn't got the, uh, you gotta get a question proper.
But Stacy wrote the email, though.
Ma'am?
You with the legal department?
Yes, I am.
Okay, he's at, you hear, you can, you hear?
Pull the mic.
I mean, I can hear him talking.
Pull the, pull the mic around, pull the mic up.
Yeah, I can hear him talking, but-
Okay, well, he's asking about this, item number one. And what the, Glenn, ask her the question.
Charlie, I, I mean, um, and Chief Reeves, you're mentioned in the email that you and Chief Harris, um, and it says, based on my conversations with Chief Harris and Chief Reeves, I believe they agree, um, with my assessment, and they have an alternative plan in place which I will allow them to share with you. Is what the email says.
Yes, sir. Um, so ultimately, based on what the insurance is, that it doesn't cover us, you know, we would, our stance would be that we would like to really kind of get out of requiring officers to work off-duty at clubs. It presents a pretty big danger for us, both liability-wise and personal safety-wise. But what we have been doing since we haven't been doing the off-duty stuff, we have kinda, we, it's kind of like a extra detail, and they don't primarily focus just on the clubs. However, they're out there during the time that the clubs are open, and there are extra officers on the streets, and they check on these different locations to make sure everybody's in compliance, no overcrowding, and if anything were to happen, we could pull them to assist us with any problems. And that is an overtime detail, and it consists of six officers and a supervisor. And we feel that that is fairly sufficient for what we're looking for.
And, and Chief, listen, I'm not a police officer, but I don't, personally, I understand the part that we're not covered under the insurance. But somewhere across this country, other people are doing it, and there's a policy somewhere that will allow us to do that. So if the insurance is an issue, we should be able, that's what I think I have been asking for a month and a half, is what other cities, what insurance policy is it, and can we afford it? And then the second half of that equation is, you know, six officers and a supervisor were paying overtime, and we say they're not in club parking lots, but they a lot are because we have issues with them.
It is a focus for them, yes, sir.
And it's overtime that we are paying for clubs to have, quote, "extra security." And that's just, that's just not fair. We either need to shrink the size of the clubs, or find the officers, or do something, but per our policy, it's one officer per 50 individuals that are drinking alcohol.
But I guess the question is, I guess the question is, the police department sound like they don't want to do it. If we find that insurance or not, you guys are pretty much against doing those-
That is our preference to-
Right.
To try and get away from that. That is a concern and consideration for us.
And I can agree with you, Chief Reeves, and I think, I mean, Ms. Mayor, Mr. Pruitt had this discussion, I just think it's, it should be up on the ownership of the clubs to provide their own, uh, whether it be security, whether we got 50 pour drinking, however, if you need 15 security officers, that should be on you and not on the backs of Montgomery Police Department, because I look at it as a liability, it can be some corruption going on, all kind of stuff that can go on, and never in the past have we done this. You know, I think this is something that came up over the last five or six years where we start using off-duty officers in the parking lot, and, and you know, when you look at the liability that it may cause the city, I just think, me personally, if you own the business, you should be required, the council can do a, a, a ordinance that you required to have your own private security, and you know, that's entrepreneurship, in my opinion. You know, that gives someone opportunity to go out and do that type of business.
Yes, sir, and that's kind of where we stand with it, too, that we would, uh, hope that the council would assist us with an ordinance that required, um, specific number of security officers, and you know, we're not turning our, our, uh, our blind eye to it. We know that there's an issue, we're still gonna be interacting and doing what we need to, however, the burden of it should fall on the business itself, so.
And, and Chief, nobody's saying that, and in months previous, I wanted to up the pay from $30 an hour to $55 an hour.
Yes, sir.
And per, and again, I want this council to understand, per the police department's regulations, when you go sign up for off-duty police officers, it says, "one officer per 50." Now, if y'all think hiring, you know, local security companies with those little yellow lights going around and around in circles gonna protect somebody, guys, y'all better revisit y'all's thinking, because I'm telling you, we fixing, we fixing to get in the world of problems, and we're paying for police, for, for clubs to have extra, quote, "not security, but security."
Well, I think one of the things in the email that's worthy of pointing out in there, sir, is the fact that when an officer is in, when an officer is in that capacity, as in off-duty, um, in the parking lot, if any criminal action occurs, whether it be outside the club or inside the club, we're deemed to have to act.
Right.
And if something is going on inside that club that we don't know about, you know, really puts a, some, you know, really puts it back on us for liability reasons, that there were criminal activity that was taking place and we didn't take an action. And I just think that that's worthy of pointing out that's in the email, that that really holds us liable.
And I get that, and I get that, Chief, but people walk in drunk in Winn-Dixie and buy more beer, and there's an officer in Winn-Dixie parking lot on Bone Road pretty much every night, and if he leaves Winn-Dixie and he didn't seem drinking, we could be held responsible.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, we can spin this however we want to spin it, but I just, I think it's a massive mistake, and that's just-
Yes, sir.
-one person's opinion.
I think we should continue to discuss it till we feel that there's, um, a resolution that everybody is happy with on it, so.
And I can tell this council, I'm not gonna vote for another lounge liquor license with 900 people in it. I'm not doing it. No, yeah.
Okay.
Probably no 100.
All right. Any more discussion on this issue?
Yeah, so Glenn, what do you want to do? I mean, do you want us to look into having MPD change their policy, 'cause, or, you know, business license change, or whomever, wherever that policy is that says it has to be one officer per 50? Do we need to look into changing that? Do we need to look into getting somebody to draw us up a, a ordinance that says it's only, you know, the business owner to have a-
It says it now, Brenda, doesn't it?
Can I just make a comment? Because the council in the past has on, in specific location, problem locations, required extra security, and it was at the owner's expense, extra security inside, plus in the parking lot. The only trouble with that is it was spread in the minutes, and as they passed, you know, new license, it kind of gets lost in transition that that requirement is there. So my recommendation would be an ordinance to require the owners of a certain size-
Certified security officers.
Cause it-
Not just a tee-shirt going in, security officer.
Cause it's worked in the past at some of the, the locations where the council required it, um, the extra security, not police, but then for the owners to require security, and it was at their own expense, and they complied with it, but like I said, because it was in the minutes, it wasn't across the reportments, it kind of got lost as, as the locations changed ownerships.
Okay, what do you think about that, Glenn?
We need to do something.
Mr. Pruitt, we just draw it up and just make it certified, post-certified security officers, not just a person wearing a tee-shirt saying, "I'm security," they need to be licensed and bonded by Alabama.
I think that's already in the books.
I do, too. I, I know it is in the books, I think it is. I don't think it specifies a number, C.C., that they have to have.
Ms. Blaylock, will you be able to find that for us, where it's in the minute saying that, so we can kind of pull that same language out that the previous council had passed and see if that's the one we want to use, or if we need to change it?
They, it, it was just part of the motion, a motion, part of it, that they require-
So it wouldn't be only an agenda?
For security guards inside, for security guards outside, extra lighting, they've required extra lighting, that sort of thing, but it was just part of the motion, and it was spread in the minutes.
For any particular, for one particular business, not every, not everyone.
They were specific liquor license, where there were, uh, problems that arose.
So, like I said, how many problems?
Five, one persistent, one persistent.
Okay, are you, will you be able to work on a resolution, or get the legal department to work on a resolution for that?
We probably, Audrey, gonna have to do an ordinance.
Yeah.
You'll be able to work on it?
Brenda can draw it up.
Either myself or Ms. Bellinger, yes.
Okay. Let's do, let's do something like that, and get, get some person to get in front of us, okay?
So what are we doing, Charlie?
We're gonna draw up an ordinance, but then make, talk about what Brenda's talking about.
Okay.
We're doing it, we've done it in, up to this point, we made an exception. On issues where we had a bad problem, we made an exception and required these people to do more, okay? Cause you've got some that are good bars and, and then-
Right.
But then you got some bad, bad guys, and the bad guys, we asked them to do more. And I think that reality is, and if that doesn't work, then like, we just pull the license period. You know, I think the reality of all this stuff, that we need to start, we've already pulled licenses this year.
Now, Charlie, in this ordinance, will there be enforcement, uh, policy that if you don't have X number, and you've got 500, and you, and I'm just throwing a number out, that you should have 10, and you've only got five there that night? I mean, who's gonna police that?
Then you can call in for a-
Police department can do that.
Shell cost hearing.
And I don't know if this is the opportunity to be able to address this or not, but we ran into a situation with one of the clubs over the weekend, um, where, you know, I would really like to know if we can put something in the ordinance where we require them, you have a hard stop at the time you have to close. Um, there is no, we're gonna keep going till our patrons leave, but we have a hard stop of, um, this is the time your business should close. We had a situation with Club of War over the weekend where at 3:30 in the morning, we were still trying to clear out their parking lot, so, um, and it was because the owner was essentially saying he just wasn't gonna shut down, so.
And that's the one we need to bring back to the clerk, to the, uh, council, or do something?
We're gonna, we're gonna keep an eye on them.
Okay.
You know, I had a, I had a good discussion with him on Saturday, I think he kind of understands some dynamics now.
Okay.
So we'll keep an eye on them, however, um, I know, I believe that the ordinance is till 2 o'clock on Sunday morning-
Right.
-that they have to shut down, and that kind, that would apply to them, but I don't recall knowing of any time during the week that they can be open. I just think that that would be really important to put in there, that 1:30 is your last call, 2 o'clock, your business needs to be shut down, um, if we could-
That would be a good, that would be a good thing to have.
Lock that in with what we're doing with all of those.
We can make that happen.
Could do that.
We can make that happen.
All right, thank you.
We'll make that happen.
Thank you.
Very good.
Okay, number- Charlie, do we want to, do we want to pass this till we get the ordinance?
Well, what's it, you're saying a moratorium, no more than you allow, you allow-
Till we get the ordinance?
I think, I, I think we can come up with an ordinance within the next two weeks, uh, Mr. Pruitt.
You sure?
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
We're gonna write it.
We're gonna write it, sir.
I, I get it written. Yeah, we get it written.
Not a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, just carry this home.
Hey, Ms. Graham, remember that.
Yeah, we'll get it written.
Remember that. Okay.
Okay, item number two, I hope that the people here from Dollar General today. And number three is the canvassing election, what do you have at 5 o'clock?
Yes, sir, I put a folder in front of each of you, and I'll walk you through it when we get to that place in the council meeting, and once we adopt, there's two resolutions in there to be adopted, and once the last one is adopted, then Mr. Grimes can be sworn in and take his seat on the dais.
And then we will, and all of us have to sign this form?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
At least one of them. Pick one and, and pass it down.
Yep. Mr. Pruitt, why don't you start that?
Okay.
And pass yours down.
There's two of them, and there was a, there's two.
All right, number five is a, uh, number four, Mr. Pruitt, this year is Thornton Trace, homeowner, associate?
Yes, sir. They're, they're baiting the, uh, they're baiting the property.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Jenwright, and they're, we're gonna put a gate up.
Okay, no, no problem with that. All right, it's going, number five.
Are they paying for it, Mr. Pruitt?
Huh?
Who paying for it?
Uh, myself and Doug Singleton.
Okay.
Okay, number five is a, just a D O G Justice Assistant Grant, we always do the JAG grant every year, and then number six is, uh, something to do with Alda, just to approve or do that. Mr. Young, Rose, that's yours, that's yours, then.
Mr. Young, Rose, Ms. Graham?
Mm-hmm, Ms. Graham.
Yeah.
All right, number seven is a bar, First Watch on Velda Road, we'll see them when they come in.
Yeah, that's super good.
Is that yours?
That's Clay.
Mr. President, it's me, yes, you go with it.
Okay. Tax Curb Company, next, no issue there, then, uh, Tear Down Two, and then we got Public Newses, and then Erlene Wright. Uh, we'll, we'll discuss that, but reality of it, uh, there's still another meeting between the city, county on this money, uh, and there's still not any real direction on where we can spend the money yet. So I did email, sent out an email earlier talking about, we don't have total direction on what's, how we can spend the money yet, so, yes, we're waiting on that from Washington, and we've got, we're hiring a, trying to hire a consultant to help us. Let me just say this on that, between the city and county, there's 92 million dollars, I think. We had, Charlie, you were in the meeting the other day, and for the ones that weren't there, you need to hear this, there's more money out there from other departments and other parts of state and federal government that could be used for the things we need here in Montgomery. So a lot of the things, if we don't have the proper plan, we'd be using our money when we can use somebody else's money. So we may be able to double our money by being patient and doing, doing it the right way. So we've got people working for us right now, trying to, trying to come up with an idea of how to, how to make this work, so I think we could be, could be a lot more money than what we think it is, and we, we need to make sure we spend it right, okay? Yeah, okay. Uh, I've got from the floor, let's see, okay. I think we got work session roster, right? Stephen Tears, come talk to us about animals. And you've got a lot of them, I understand.
That we do.
See, now, Audrey, you, who called?
Yeah, I did. Hey, how you doing?
I'm good.
Good, Marshay Johnson, District Three. So, um, we've been having a lot of issues with animals throughout the city, and I know you were under contract, but as I read the contract, it has actually expired, uh, as of 2018, unless there is a more current one, but the one that we have.
That's the last one I signed.
That's the last one.
That's the last one I signed.
It, it extended another three years, so.
It did.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if you have a copy of that one that you signed, can you forward that to us?
I certainly can.
Yeah.
It's the exact same.
Yeah.
I think, uh, Kim actually just changed the dates and sent it back out. Kim Fell.
Who, who did that?
The city attorney, Kim.
Kim Fell.
She's the attorney.
Okay. Yeah, let, let us get a copy of that, please, if you can send it to Brenda, so we can have the updated terms, because what I'm finding is, we are not able to get in contact with your department, or don't have the correct information to reach your department when we're having disturbances in our communities. So I know at one point, we were working with MPD, so what I want to do is, I'm updating an animal ordinance, and I'm looking to get permits if they have so many animals, because what's happening is, communities are becoming breeding grounds, and people are unable to get out their cars, and we can't reach you all, so I want to find out if it's a way that maybe it's personnel, or maybe it needs to be some kind of communication, but I would like for you to come to a meeting that we're having this week, I'll send some information through email that I'm having with MPD to kind of figure out how we can make this animal ordinance up to date-
Okay.
-and find out where there's gaps between your contract and where MPD can fill in the void, because they're answering calls for animals when you all are not there.
What do you, what kind of calls are they answering? Are you talking about vicious dog calls?
Yes.
Well, that's the, the policy that was put before us, that any vicious dog call, because, uh, they have people on patrol, the officers are on patrol, they could respond quicker, and if they lay their eyes on the dog and confirm viciousness, then we will come out. That was the policy that was set before us. That was, that's not us doing anything more than what we were, uh, what was part of the contract, the verbal agreement. So if you call in a vicious dog, they're just dispatch an officer. If the officer arrives on scene and the dog is vicious, they will reach back out to our deputy who will be en route.
Chief Reeves, has that been working with the department? I know we are gonna have that conversation, but since he's here-
Sure.
-in person now, can we talk to that, on how that's working as far as with the calls when we have the vicious dog call? Even snakes, you know, it, it's a lot of animals that's in the communities that we're unable to, and what are your hours of operation? Because after hours, it's still leaning more on MPD, and they're doing more calls for animals when they could be doing something else.
Okay, so after hours, the call's actually forward to the dispatch system, to, uh, MPD dispatchers. And then based off of, again, the contract, we answer vicious dog calls, or, uh, officer, like if they were to pull somebody over for DUI on a dog in the car, we would be called out for that, there's a, uh, some items that were called out for. Now, a snake in the yard, we wouldn't be called out for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, snake in the house, we certainly would be. I mean, if it's a danger, a public danger, then we will come out, yes, ma'am.
Mm-hmm, okay.
But the, the calls are generated from dispatch.
It's not working like that right now. It, it's not working, because what's happening is, we'll have communities calling for this, we'll call, and some of the community members are calling Animal Control specifically, like the number that's on there, they're going straight to Animal Control and getting voicemail. I can say, even from my experience, I've left a voicemail, and it took Ms. Blaylock to contact you to find you, and that's been two months.
Left a voicemail for me?
I, I left a voicemail for you, and my intern has also called, and the only way I got you was through Ms. Blaylock.
Okay.
So that's problematic for me as well.
Okay, well, I'll certainly check into that. I didn't receive any, uh, voicemail. I would have certainly called you back.
Thank you.
Well, and wait, and before you go, since you're here, what is the, tell me, why don't we do anything with cats? That's almost this, y'all, y'all won't take them, you won't come get them, we have to catch them ourselves, we have to pay for the traps, and they're multiplying, yeah, that's, that's what I was, and they're multiplying at a very lo, a very fast pace in the community.
We actually are, uh, working on the cat problem, it's, uh, for a decade, people thought you could trap your way to control in the population, um, and this past year, we began doing TNR and SNR, which is trapping them, fixing them, giving them a rabies shot, tipping their ears so you could visually see that they're fixed, and putting them back in the location. The only way to, uh, fix a feral cat problem is to stabilize the colony. If you remove the cat that, or the wrong cat, you're resulting in a population boom, and that's what we're seeing, is people are pulling cats off, kind of see one cat, remove one cat, but if you remove the alpha male, you're gonna see a boom, and then that next spring, you're gonna see, if you had 10 cats, you're gonna have 30, because all the males will start breeding. So, uh, we obtained a grant through, uh, Best Friends, uh, out of Utah, uh, we have done right around 1,000 spay-neuters, um, rabies shots and, uh, uh, ear tips, so we're in the middle of trying to help people that are willing to, uh, help us with the project we pay for the spay-neuter, and then also, if there's any neighbors in the neighborhood that, uh, don't want the cats in the yard, we do have deterrents that are also available for, uh, at no charge, so whether it's, uh, the, the word excuse me, it's not supersonic, but something the cats can hear that we can't, there's also sprinklers, there's all kinds of things that'll keep the cats off of properties where they're not welcome. So our goal is, much like, uh, many other municipalities across the country, is to stabilize the, uh, population, and as they die off, you, you'll see the problem getting fixed.
And now, are you trapping them, or is it they're phoning the community to catch them?
No, uh, we, uh, we haven't charged for traps in a very long time, uh, I mean, I don't know where they're, unless they're utilized in the Alabama Animal Alliance Spay-Neuter Clinic. Now, if somebody's willing to put them back, all the services are free, um, but no, the only time we would trap a cat is if it was injured, or there was a potential bite, but in 99% of cat bites, the person can't describe the cat, or it looks like a great number of cats in the colony. So, no, we don't trap them, we just help people as they're brought in, and then we return them back home, or back to where they came from.
How many personnel do you have working with you right now for the Animal Control Department?
There's a total of 11 sworn officers.
Oh, really? Wow.
So there's, uh, we just have support staff as well, because sometimes you'll have one arrive on the scene, if you have multiple dogs, and somebody else will come to assist while the others continue to patrol, so it doesn't lock down all of them into one location.
And you say it's a three-year extension on the contract?
I believe they did it for three months.
So when is the expiration date, do you know?
Not off the top of my head.
So it's, it's 20, where, that'll be this year, huh?
It's probably this year, yeah.
It could be, yes, ma'am.
So Chief Reeves, can you speak to the dispatching and how the calls are working now in that relationship right now between you all and Animal Control? Yes.
We can't hear you, Chief.
It is difficult to get somebody after hours, generally during work hours, you know, they'll, we, we do get the cooperation we need, um, but it's the after hours, it's kind of the issue. To speak more on it, I'd really like to get some more information from our dispatch and how it's handled, and some of the issues they may have come up in. So what I'll do is give you, give him my card and get his contact info, and we'll kind of meet up and discuss.
That's perfect, thank you, Chief.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, could you, um, Mr. Tears, can you get with Kyle, and he'll give you the information for the meeting that we'll have this upcoming week, so as you all exchange the information, we'll meet back up at this meeting.
Sure, who do you want me to get with?
Kyle.
Okay, sure, will.
Thank you so much.
Hey, Stephen.
Sir.
How full are y'all right now?
Man, busting at the seams. I mean, busting at the seams, uh, not to be morbid, uh, we've probably put down 115 big dogs in the last six days.
Wow.
Through COVID, our shelter was empty, um, animals were a big part of people's lives, mental well-being, um, so more and more people were out looking for, because trapped in our homes. I was fearful after, you know, things settled down, but there's been a great number of strays running around, a huge number of owner surrenders brought into the shelter, so, uh, we did have an adoption event last Monday, um, we, uh, adopted out 79, which is huge, but a lot of those are puppies, cats, and kittens.
Right.
Now, I don't know if the city council, but everything that leaves our shelter is microchip fixed, everything's done to them, so, uh, to ensure that we don't contribute to the cat issues that out in our community, but, yep, busting at the seams. And every day, we clear a few out, we get probably 50% more than what we actually adopted out back in.
And while, Marshay, could they probably do things differently, maybe, but with what they've got and the resources, they do a pretty good job.
Yeah.
And if you not, you guys have never been out there, I challenge y'all to go out there and just see, I mean, like Stephen said, it'd break your heart, I mean, I go out there all the time, so, you know.
And we're, we're not opposed to altering anything to, to serve, the idea of us taking animal control out from the, um, the police department, it was, everybody mutually agreed at the time when we saw it, and is, uh, to provide, uh, animal services, instead of instead of the city does this and the shelter does that. The idea was to deliver a better service to the community, um, instead of having to call around. Now, I haven't been told, uh, I know our officers get multiple calls out at night. Um, there has been some struggle as far as, um, they're being told everything is vicious so that they'll come. Um, so there is some, uh, fatigue as far as there and I guess par for the course sometimes, but we're, we're not opposed to do things different or work together differently to, to ensure a good service. So I'll be happy to come to the meeting and.
And let's see what we can work out. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
One que, one question, what would you say your personnel was?
Sir?
Your personnel?
A total of 10 officers, 10 sworn officers.
And you would need to just do 10 more officers, about 20 officers to do what needs to be done in the city of Montgomery, you think?
You know, I, I don't think, honestly, I don't think that the answer is officers. It's spay neuter. I mean, we have such an overpopulation issue, that, that's what we're facing. So a lot of our mission is going for grants and things like that to fix these animals, because rarely do you get bit by an altered animal.
Yes.
Um, you'll never have 15 dogs in one yard and they're all fixed. That's not what they're, I mean, so spay neuter is the answer. And that's where we're pumping a lot of our time, funds and effort into making it possible. We set up the spay neuter clinic, uh, on Atlanta Highway 11 years ago, give or take.
Yeah.
They've done well over 100,000 spays and neuters for people that couldn't afford regular vet care or wouldn't. Um, in that timeframe, we've probably done 20,000 or 30,000 of our own surgeries, uh, altering. So it's, uh, the answer is spay neuter.
Yes.
The answer is stopping the unnecessary backyard breeding, maybe business licenses. The $20 fee is absolutely ridiculous when you're selling a $500 dog.
Right.
Um, you know, we're right on board with you. And I did talk to Chief Finley in passing, he was a very busy man. Um, there's just nothing set up as far as like who does it? It, it's under the police chief or is designee, but we don't have a form, we don't know who's supposed to collect the money, there's nothing in there that helps us, um, execute that or who, who's in charge of it. So certainly on board with that. But if you want to give us 10 more officers, we're all about it, but I think spay neuter's the way to go.
Do you, do you receive enough grant money to do what you need to do with the spay and neuter program?
We did, we received $60,000.
Okay.
Um, and we're hoping it's reoccurring. I am working with other, um, agencies and local donors to kind of keep that program going.
Okay.
You know, the, the cats, a feral cat that enters the facility is 100% euthanized. There's, you can't house them. So we have now people that are looking for barn cats, we have people that are willing to take care of these cats. We've actually got a team that goes out and talks to the neighborhood, talks to the person that's frustrated about the cat using the flower bed. So we're trying to work every angle to, um, stop the needless euthanasia, stabilize and, um, allow them to die off naturally.
Thanks, Megan.
Stephen, you have a board that works for you that, I don't know how many of you know about the board, but the Humane Society has a, has a board that has veterinarians on it and they work all these different things. And they go and recruit and try to get money from different places to, uh, help the spay and neuter program, because that is, like you said, that's been going on quite a while and, and it was hard to get started. In my days, I remember how hard it was to get a lot of veterinarians involved, but it's now beginning to work.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Stephen. All right, Dotson Davis, Dotson Davis is here.
How you doing?
Yes, sir. Your name?
My name is Dotson.
Okay, Dotson, okay. And you're here to talk to us about, uh, what do you want to do?
Um, I, I'm the executive director of a nonprofit organization, the Carrington Impact Foundation. Our mission is to provide affordable, clean, safe housing for veterans, low income and seniors. We recently just purchased a property at 854 Sayer Street. And the adjacent lot, 848 Sayer Street, is abandoned and we, I'm here on behalf of the foundation to ask if the city would consider donating 848 Sayer Street.
Who we got here over there wants to give away some property right now?
Sir?
Hey, do we own that property?
I just purchased the house at 854.
No, no, I'm talking about 848. Do the city own it?
No, yeah, the city owns it. I just purchased the house at 854 Sayer Street.
Chris?
And the empty lot is 848.
All right. Play that show, just.
This, Rhonda?
Yes, ma'am.
You, you own it?
The city owns it and he would be in charge of that.
So I need to speak to him?
Yes.
Listen.
Talk to.
He's the person that can make the deal happen for you.
There you go. Okay, very good.
We see you just smiling, Mr. Wilson. You like it, don't you?
Yeah, Mr. Wilson knows, yeah, he knows. All right, Victor Long, Victor Long here. Okay?
Yeah, it's me and Lee Giles here, Representative Fathers, Helping Fathers.
Okay, you, you, you're Victor Long and he's?
Yes, sir, I'm Lee Giles and this is Victor Long.
Okay. And you're looking for what?
Uh, well, we're here for our Fathers, Helping Fathers organization here in Montgomery. Uh, we come into, we have a broad mission actually, but our main focus is to make sure every father that we come in contact with has every resourceful tool that they need to be effective in their child's life. And we also have other programs that we're going to be implementing into the public school system as well.
Thanks, sir.
And, uh, we also have core values that we want to implement into our fathers, which is fearless, accessible, being triumphant, heroic, effective, resolute and sincere. And those are our core values that we want to implement to all the fathers that we do come in contact with, with this organization. And, uh, once our Victor returns, he will let you know what our immediate needs are.
How long you, how long you been in business?
Uh, since, um, March the 16th of, uh, 2018.
Okay.
Yes, sir, I'm here to talk about our immediate needs. Uh, if you look at the package, he just went over the first page to tell you a little bit about our group. Second page shows a little bit of our interaction and what we do and it shows our mission. And we're here today, uh, to present to you our 2021 mission. And our budget for the year of 2021 is $84,861. And out of that, we mostly cover out of our pockets ourselves. We are here in front of the city today, asking you all for your support in the renovation of Ridgecrest Park, which is where we're looking to hold an event and on August 1st. And that's one of our immediate needs. The second one is also to provide, uh, two phone lines for fathers, because this will allow us to continue to communicate with the fathers in the area and also give the fathers a chance to empower each other and continue to work together and prove that we could effectively come together to resolve issues such as these at Ridgecrest Park. And also continue to allow us to be the heroes in our children's lives and, uh, continue to spend time with them and offer them the time they need as, as children instead of spending time trying to worry about a park.
Which one are you, the barber?
I, I am.
Okay. Um, Kay, is Kay in here? Hey, Kay. We, we just, let's, um.
I think we already got somebody working with them about Ridgecrest Park.
Yeah, we, we want to see what we're doing. So we doing something at Ridgecrest Park?
Yeah, we actually, we're working with a volunteer group right now. We have a workday scheduled, so we're going to get the park cleaned up. We've ordered some playground equipment and we have building maintenance working on the restroom building. So that is in the works.
That's a big.
You got a timeline, Kay, when we might kind of, where they can, because when is it, you were trying to do your event out there?
August 1st.
Yeah, that'll be tight. I think our, our group is not coming until that time. Well, I mean, we can get it cut and everything for you, playground equipment won't be here by then. We'll get the.
Well, we were going to go into the park on ourselves and do as much as we could on our own, so.
Awesome, let's talk.
Yeah, we'll need this company here today to see if we can get as much as possible.
What about the restroom?[1520.91]